Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining the City Council Work Session for Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The mayor will be joining us a little bit later, so we'll go ahead and kick off. We have a presentation leading us off this afternoon regarding the Cedar Rapids and Marion Growth Study, and Kesha, I think you've got that?
Can you hear me now? So, since that, and since two thousand and ten, when we adopted our comprehensive plan, we have done planning documents, planning areas for the neighborhood of Indian Creek, and so that's identified in the, in the shape of number one. Number two is on the east side of Marion, is the East Marion Sub-Area Plan. And then today, we are going to talk about the area in number three, which is the C Avenue to Albernet Road Growth Area Study. So this was a joint partnership with the city of Cedar Rapids back in May of twenty-one. We partnered with Cedar Rapids, ultimately selecting MSA consultants to lead us through a planning study for the area where the, where the two cities meet. So with that, I will introduce, bring up here Shannon Gap with MSA, who's going to present on the Growth Area Study.
All right, well, first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to give a short presentation about the C Avenue-Albernet Road Growth Area Study. As you may know, this area spans across parts of both Cedar Rapids and Marion and has lots of opportunities for future growth and development. With that, I'll go ahead and move into the agenda. We're just going to start with some quick introductions of the project team, talk a little bit about the project background, review some past plans that relate to the study area, go over visioning and place making, move into the transportation planning aspect of the project, go into existing and future land use planning, take a quick look at the population and market analysis, go over some additional maps and data that are in the appendices of the report, and then end with a very short conclusion. So in terms of introductions, I just wanted to quickly introduce the project team as this is a multidisciplinary approach to the project. I'm Shannon Gap, the project manager for the study. I have a background in both community and regional planning as well as landscape architecture, so this project is kind of the best of both worlds and something I'm really excited and passionate about. Also on our team, we have two people for the transportation planning aspect of it who are really knowledgeable. We also have Eric Thompson and Amber Converse, who were great when it comes to water resources engineering and GIS analysis. We also partnered with Confluence, so we had Chris Shires, Patrick Alvord, and Jane Reasoner all working on the population and market analysis as well as the future land use plan, and then just some oversight and QA QC. In terms of background, the project was essentially spurred by both the city of Cedar Rapids and Marion jointly expressing an interest in developing a study for the area. After doing the population and market analysis, it became very clear that this area was integral to the growth of both communities, and it required some further investigation of how and where future development should occur. The report itself starts with a brief project overview that just goes over the importance of planning and the significance of having a proactive approach to urban development, so thinking about smart growth. We also came up with concept level maps and layouts, so thinking about future road networks, multi-use facilities, and future parks. We identified future growth patterns and looked at where single-family residential, multifamily, and commercial should be located, and then just the importance of creating valuable destinations, really meaningful, memorable places. The study area itself is five point six square miles, so roughly two thousand five hundred acres, so it's a large amount of land. If you look at the regional context map, it does include parts of Cedar Rapids. Marion is directly adjacent to Robbins, and then includes quite a bit of Marion Township. The study area also has areas of floodplain, which are shown in blue, and then also some existing and planned developments, which are shown in yellow. It's directly north of East Robbins Road and includes key roads such as C Avenue, Albernet Road, and County Home Road. Key components of this study are land use, so looking at future and existing land use, connectivity, thinking about pedestrian and vehicular connectivity, parks really building upon the amenities that are already currently in the area, and then other services like utilities and stormwater. The goals of the study are relatively simple. They all relate to preservation, walkability, biophilic design, parks and recreation, and then housing and development opportunity. When we talk about preservation, it's really the community character of both communities. We look at the overall circulation, working innately with nature when it comes to biophilic design, which we'll talk a little bit more about. And then, when I mentioned build upon those amenities, really looking at Lau Park, the Tuma Soccer Complex, and the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. As you can see on that previous slide, there were those existing planned developments in yellow, and some of those include Prairie Landing, Echo Hill Estates, Echo Ridge additions, and Silver Rock Estates. A big component of the study was just looking at past plans that relate to the study area. There's been a lot of study on this specific location. We looked at the Envision CR, which is Cedar Rapids Comprehensive Plan. We looked at Marion's Comprehensive Plan. We looked at Marion's Strategic Plan, and then that step into nature with Marion document that really brings out the biophilic design aspect. We also looked at Robbins' Future Land Use Map, as it is directly adjacent to the study area, and then a number of sanitary sewer studies. We also looked at transportation planning, so the corridor MPO's Long Range Plan as well as the city of Marion's Major Streets Guide. And then there was also a series of technical memorandums, so a lot of research has already been done on this area that we wanted to make sure we were building upon. In terms of visioning and place making, we wanted to look at key categories like stormwater management, multi-use facilities or trails, parks and recreation, and more. In terms of those multi-use facilities, we really wanted to incorporate multimodal transportation for active transportation. This includes what I mentioned before, the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, but also the connection to Tower Terrace. You can see all these connections in green as future potential multi-use facilities, but also building upon the existing multi-use facilities that are shown in orange. Stormwater management was a large component of the project. One of the main initiatives that we looked at was the Technical Memorandum eight point one. This identified several tier one through tier three different regional watershed areas, and we analyzed each of those and came up with three highest recommended locations shown on this map. We also recommend that local developers undertake site-specific stormwater management by looking at green infrastructure, biophilic design, flood control, water quality improvements, and more. We also did a sanitary sewer capacity analysis. As we all know, that's a mechanism to treat wastewater and is vital to the community's health and clean water. One of the biggest recommendations out of this component was a proposed trunk line that connects to the thirty-inch pipe in Robbins. It also includes a trunk line extension, and you can see those areas that would be serviced by those in pink, and then also extending current infrastructure, which would service the areas in blue. The most challenging area is that northeast quadrant. There is the opportunity to connect to Marion's sanitary sewer system, but it is close to capacity, so it's not recommended at this point. Parks and Recreation was probably one of my favorite components with my background in landscape architecture. We really wanted to make sure that these proposed potential park locations had access to trails, so the multi-use facility, each and every one of those do. We also looked at the watersheds and the floodplain areas as there are limitations to what can be built in those areas, and then also made sure we were accommodating both single-family and multifamily residential. In terms of transportation planning, some of the key considerations were, of course, Tower Terrace Road alignments, which has a benefit to many different communities in the area. And then we also looked at the Marion Major Streets Map from two thousand and fifteen, and those are directly reflected within our proposed trails, which shows existing arterials in blue, existing collectors in that kind of pink magenta, and then proposed collectors, platted local streets, proposed local streets, all with a dashed line. The future arterial is that green dashed line at the bottom, which is Tower Terrace Road. One of the largest components of the study was future land use. The first thing we did was review Envision CR and Marion's Comprehensive Plan to better understand that GIS data, put it right into the map, and figure out how it relates to the study area. As you can see, there's areas of greater intensity along corridors and green space within the floodplains. But all in all, there needs to be one cohesive plan that both communities can agree upon. Before moving into future land use, we really wanted to study and analyze the existing land use. If you look at the lighter green color, that you can see that most of this is primarily agricultural, but there is some low-density residential. But really, looking at those development pressures as this area is growing, making sure that we're providing orderly and efficient development. And then we also wanted to make sure that we were justifying this potential growth. We did a population and market analysis with Confluence, who looked into approximately how many households would need to accommodate this growth, whether it's suitable for the future land use plan, whether we're meeting those needs and providing a mix of housing types. One of the findings was that there is a demand for higher-value homes as many of the people living in or near the study area work in industries with higher wages, and that additional commercial space, retail, and office would be needed to meet the needs of existing and future residents. So here's the big map that we came up with multiple iterations of throughout the entire process. We really wanted to make sure that we were incorporating those existing flats, existing developments that are already out there, and updating based on comments we received from both of the communities. Some of the main considerations were strong stormwater best management practices, thinking about wet and dry basins and how they can serve as a destination, including a variety of housing opportunities with different price points, and then additional sewer and water system connectivity, like I showed in the previous maps. And then lastly, just to provide an appropriate scale similar to that of C Avenue or Boyson Road. So, all in all, kind of the key findings of the growth study that we worked on is that there is a high demand for growth and development potential. We really want to provide an opportunity to have mix of housing based on that future land use plan that we developed. We identify some potential future park and trail locations and that there are cohesive land uses between the two communities for the study area that incorporates vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Any questions? I tried to keep it relatively short and sweet. I know you've got other things on your agenda.
Questions? Yeah, Steve?
I mean, this is a very large area, and I think we, I kind of, it, it kind of feels like each city is kind of growing towards, we're coming from the east, Cedar Rapids is coming from the west. What percentage of this twenty-five hundred acres is county? Is the majority of this still county?
The majority of it is actually Marion Township. You can see in that regional context map, you've got that little northern part of Cedar Rapids and then kind of that northwest portion of Marion in there.
Okay, so, okay, so who else are you giving this presentation to? Are you giving this to the Cedar Rapids City Council as well?
Couple of weeks ago, we met with city staff from both Cedar Rapids and Marion and gave a, a more in-depth presentation at that meeting.
Now, first of all, I think, based on the studies we've done in those other two areas you pointed out at the beginning, I think doing this planning at this stage is extremely beneficial, so.
Absolutely.
Now, I know it's all subject to change, but at least having a master plan that everybody can kind of start working with is, is a tremendous benefit, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, other questions? One of the questions that I have, and you touched on it, I think, pretty clearly, but I just wanted to recycle back to the point of sanitary sewer.
Yes.
And that that would be a trunk line that would run to the southwest and interconnect with an existing, was that in Robbins? I guess, and maybe this is a question for Mike, in our general planning, did we have any, any of our long-range planning that looked out as far north as this particular area?
I'd have to pull up the HDR report, but that was part of the input that went into this. When we get into the comp planning, all that'll go into this, but this is just one of the many things that'll go into the comp plan that we'll be working on.
Okay, but so HDR's considerations were a base input to this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep, we looked at their technical memorandums and all the different studies relating to sewer capacity prior to developing this map.
And, and then in terms of stormwater management, you've already defined where there should be detention basins?
Recommendations at least, but we do recommend that as different sites are developed, that the developers look at site-specific stormwater management practices, making sure they're meeting code for that specific area. But these are kind of the prime locations if you were to have regional watersheds.
Okay, great. That touches on the two biggies that I think of in this regard.
Yeah, Technical Memorandum eight point one definitely showed more regional detention areas, but you can see with the existing developments that have already occurred, the existing flats, there's already conflict, so we analyzed all of that and made sure none of these would conflict with the future land uses that we were showing.
Any other questions? Shannon, thank you so much for this presentation.
Absolutely.
Kesha, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, Mike mentioned it and touched on it briefly, comprehensive plan. And so that is something that is a priority of, of planning staff and of the council is to update our comprehensive plan. And so a study like this is going to help us inform, have these pre-conversations so when we go forward with the comp plan. So we anticipate releasing the RFP for consultant selection in May, this May, and then through June and July, we'll go through selection committee reviews, interviews, and then contract, ultimately working through the contract in August, September. We would anticipate that to come back to council for contract approval. And then twenty-three, the rest of twenty-three and twenty-four, plan development, community input, or as they say, where the fun stuff happens, right? That's, that's where the nuts and bolts come in. And then March of two thousand and twenty-five, we'd anticipate the adoption by the city council. And so, not, not a light process, so a lot of community input, a lot of staff input, and a lot of guiding documents to help us through this as well. But just an update on that, so we have all of these sub-area plans and studies to help us ultimately revise our comprehensive plan coming up. Any questions of staff on that?
Any questions? Very good, thank you. Okay, next up, let's see, is it Brian? Regarding the fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three budget amendment. Hey there.
Evening, council. So we've been talking a lot recently about the fiscal year twenty-four budget, which starts in July. This is circling back to this kind of fiscal year twenty-three budget, and this is the amendment for that budget. So just to note here, the reasons why we do this amendment, this is accounting for expenditures that were not contemplated during this budget process, whether that was unexpected or a strategic move on the council's part. So a lot of these should, if not all of them, should look familiar to you. When the state looks at this, it's, it's worth noting that they look at the function level, not at the departments, so some of the departments are grouped into the functions that you can see here. So just a overview of the general fund, where it stands as of the end of March. So this is Q one through Q three. So you can see that we are trending at just under seventy-five percent of our budget. So these are the noted areas where we looked at when we did this amendment, that you can see that we're trending over seventy-five percent. So we'll get into that in more, more detail here, and as we look at the functions. So first we'll address public safety. There's carryovers and there's adjustments. So, so a carryover is something that we had budgeted in the, in the previous year, this year twenty-two, that for many factors did not happen, and requiring that expenditure over into fiscal year twenty-three, and we're including in this amendment because we're expanding it into fiscal year twenty-three as far as the state's concerned. So that's the public service carryover. It's worth noting here, there is just a few additions that we, that staff had, had talked about from your council pocket, and those are payouts for public safety and the outsourcing of the, the fire inspection plan reviews. So then on to general government, these are the three departments that were highlighted. Again, this should look pretty familiar to the council. And then, and for, for culture and recreation, for the new library, that was because of the delays in the project. This is for the furniture equipment that was in the new library. This was carried over from fiscal year twenty-two. And then the adjustments were some repairs that needed to be made at the pool and the arts and environment center. So then covering the capital projects, the library being the major one with the delays in that project, and then we had some payments that were cutted over for SDR, for cleanup services with the ratio. So the debt service here, we are in the geo-bond issuance, but you'll be hearing more, there is a public hearing on Thursday. We are including these. It is our intention right now to move forward with the refinancing of the disaster note, and then also the refinancing right now. Our CD's two thousand and fifteen A is looking favorable market, market conditions that we would be saving on interest, so we are going to include it in this amendment in case as, if we decide to move forward, it's looking likely right now. So we have to include it in the amendments, so we have the expenditures there. This is just an internal adjustment. This will not be going on any of the state forums. If you recall, the new public service facility, we did create two new funds, capital project funds under our utility funds, sound sewer and solid waste for ease of tracking and visibility, but we have the capital project expenditures under a separate fund, so you can see them quite clearly on the fund balance accordingly. So net zero transaction as far as the amendment is concerned, but helps for administrative efficiencies. So, next steps, we will publish the notice of the public hearing. That will go, I believe, in the edition on Saturday, and then we would hold a public hearing at the next council meeting, and then look for adoption of the budget amendment. Is there any questions on that?
Questions? Very good, Brian, no questions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm actually going to take you to this next slide first. So as, as staff, we, we like to come to you before we actually do a whole lot of work in regards to the use of ARPA funds. In this particular case, tonight I'm talking to you about Housing Rental Program dollars, which is the seven hundred and thirty thousand. This will actually serve two purposes. The use of these dollars would be to go towards community development software. We're estimating that at two hundred thousand. This software would be replacing three different programs that we're currently using. The other great benefit of this is that we would also engage other departments, engineering, more specifically, stormwater, fire department. We'd be able to do inspections, permitting, everything under, under, in one program, building up the history, looking at one location. So that goes to the efficiencies and the effectiveness of our team, which streamlines also the customer service part of it and being able to do a lot of things online, from engineering plans to whatever that might be. And then the second part of that would be the Housing Rehab Grant Program. And I would like to highlight that both of these programs fall under our strategic plan goals, under efficient and effective government, and then, of course, with the housing and revitalization of our community, which then with that program, we would engage those dollars, the five hundred and thirty thousand would then be filtered or funneled, transferred to Lynn County Housing Rehab Program. We'd work with ECI cog to help administrate that. And these dollars, ARPA fund dollars, I think it's important to also point out, with, first with the Housing Rehab Grant Program, it would, we would do it very similar to CDBG dollars, so the LMI requirements, income requirements that would go along with that. The difference with the ARPA funds versus CBBG dollars is that we can actually utilize, utilize it within all of the city of Marion and not just a designated area, although we'd like to focus on certain areas, but it would be open opportunity for everyone under the income levels. With that, then, we would bring both, both of these projects back to you, the RFP, once with the Community Development Software Program, we would bring the, the proposals back to you for award, and then we'd also be bringing in May the Housing Rehab Guidelines in the agreement with ECI cog. I think that's everything. Any questions for me?
Yeah.
Or from any of our team?
I just wanted to add for council, because it's been a, it's been a while since Gary had come and presented to the council an update on the, some of the building division activities and the, the housing inspection. If you recall, during that time, we talked about a, a program, so this is part of that solution. So it, it has been a while, it's actually before Kim's time that, that we had that presentation, so I just want to make sure we connected those dots for you.
Questions? I should just, for my colleagues, I, I asked Kim about, you know, this software package, you know, what does it do for organizational efficiency? And you, you basically answered that. It's an integration of data, data sharing, as well as then potential of process streamlining across multiple departments, so hopefully that's good. I did have a residual question about two hundred thousand. Do we have any marketplace intel that that's what these systems cost? I know you haven't identified vendors yet, but is this a reasonable expectation?
We do believe it is. We did take, there is a, a vendor that I'm somewhat familiar with that both Gary and Terrell had conversations with, just to see how many, how many seats we would need, those types, just to kind of figure out that dollar perimeter. So we do feel that two hundred thousand is, hopefully won't spend, won't have to spend all of that, but just to make sure that we're covering because of the additions with potentially engineering, fire, and so on.
So this kind of a system would be a suite of capability that is of service to multiple departments? Okay, great. Anything else? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, Chief Fagan?
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to provide an update on the City of Marion Emergency Operations Plan, Continuity of Operations Plan, and Lynn County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So as you can tell from this slide, we're going to be covering a lot of acronyms. We're going to go through that to define these and to give you an update on each one of them. So, again, if you'll recall, on February ninth, city council approved professional services with Atchison Consulting to assist the city with the development of an emergency operations plan and continuity of operations plan. So we're going to define those again tonight as I provide the update on that. So what is an emergency operations plan or an EOP? So what is an emergency operations plan or an EOP? An EOP is a plan that outlines the structure and process for responding to and recovering from a variety of emergencies or crises. EOPs are used by different levels of governments and organizations, such as businesses and schools, to communicate effectively and coordinate efforts during, during a disaster. So this is a response. So again, what is a continuity of operations plan? A continuity of operations plan is a plan that details how an organization will perform its essential functions during an emergency or a long-term disruption. The COOP identifies mission critical functions, communication methods, alternate personnel, systems and locations. So think of both of these plans as both responding to a crisis or disaster, but then simultaneously, how do we continue to maintain our essential functions during that crisis or long-term disruption? So very critical plans as we're moving into the future. Very pleased to share that these are on, on track with the development of the, the plans and we'll talk more about that in just a moment. So what is a hazard mitigation plan and how is that different than the EOP or the COOP plan? So a hazard mitigation plan is for risk reduction preventative strategies, not necessarily to tie directly to disaster response. So think of it as community risk reduction initiatives and strategies that are identified ahead of time that we may pursue to reduce risk in our community before the disasters happen. An HMP or hazard mitigation plan is a five-year plan that identifies how communities can minimize negative impacts of hazards like tornadoes, drought, flooding and others. The HMP also maintains our eligibility for grants to complete qualifying risk reduction community projects. All HME, all HMP plans in Iowa are regional or county-wide. Marion participates in hazard, hazard mitigation planning with Lynn County. Lynn County has submitted an application to a program called BRIC or Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities for Funding to Update our HMP. The Lynn County Hazard Mitigation Plan addresses thirteen natural hazards and six technological or human caused hazards. The estimated submission time for the updated HMP is in April and May of twenty twenty-four. So an update again on the EOP and the COOP as I, as I mentioned on the previous slide. We're currently actively working with Atchison Consulting and the project is on schedule to be completed late this summer. The next big item on the task list to do is what's called a THIRUP, Threats and Hazards Identification and Risk Assessment Workshop on May tenth. So this exercise is going to be held at the library here in town. And we're going to have both internal and external stakeholders a part of that workshop to gather data that will help drive the development of our emergency operations plan. So we're really looking forward to that event. Atchison Consulting is going to be facilitating that work. And it should be a very engaging process for both internal departments and also community stakeholders as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kesha. She's going to give an update real quick on the timeline for the update of the hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you, Chief. Good afternoon again. So want to touch base on our current hazard mitigation plan is in effect until April of twenty twenty-four. And so as Chief Fagan noted, EC cog has applied for funding to redo from the BRIC program to redo our countywide hazard mitigation plan. And so although it's a, it's not a concrete timeline, so we'd be looking at early fall of twenty-three to begin that. So that's countywide, that is us participating financially in that most likely with the, with the county with Cedar Rapids, working with EC cog to get our information gathering, our local input in place in twenty-three and twenty-four. That is all the communities in Lynn County, not just Marion, but ours is a, a specific piece of that. And then local adoption, ideally we come back to the city council for approval in spring of twenty-four. Federal review happens over the summer. So late summer of twenty-four, we could anticipate an approved plan. So if you look at that, there is a expiration of plan potential late summer. Ideally, what we're going to do is we're going to either attempt to shorten the timeline, extend our current plan. There's a number of options that staff is looking into to minimize that window of when current plan expires and new plan is awarded. And again, continually working with Homeland Security, EC cog, Lynn County to ensure if there is a gap, that there is little to no risk of losing out on any funding potentials. Any questions of staff?
Steve, so I'm thinking about what in the heck hazard mitigation plan could include? Now Cedar Rapids, I can see flood control gates and everything that they're doing to mitigate future floods. But as I think about Marion, can you give me an example of something we have done or something that might be in our plan that we're going to use to mitigate some?
I feel like, I think something that we've, I think, talked about is generators applying for funding for additional generators.
Okay.
A lot of communities do sirens. So storm shelters type, again, this is, this is stuff that goes in, this is pre any type of disaster mitigation that goes into that. All of the things are identified in that and it basically gives you a list of all the things that you could apply to the federal government for, for disaster, preemption type of stuff. So.
Yeah, I remember we did talk about generators previously for Lau Park and.
And, and, and sometimes too, I haven't seen ours here yet. But oftentimes it like, you know, water facilities and making sure there's proper fencing around certain important assets, gen, electrical substations or, or things like that within the city's control. So it will, it oftentimes it will identify those areas that we have to work on to improve on. The generator example was provided, but it will kind of go through so we can figure out, okay, we need to secure this area or purchase this. So.
And it gives you the ability to identify items that you could apply for funding for, but it does not commit you to apply for funding. So it's, it's again, it's just a, it's a readiness plan.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Sarah?
This may be with chief too. So this is really the plan, like this could be everything from truck with hazardous material has an accident in the middle of town and we have to have materials. Are we, it's, does this go to this or is it strictly natural disaster type of planning?
So it, it would cover that as far as a risk reduction strategies if there's things like, I think, what Ryan was referring to is critical infrastructure to shore up and protect critical infrastructure. As far as responding to spills, that would be more emergency response and coordinating with, with more of a disaster type of response within the community or on the EOP side, if that were to escalate.
Right.
But from a risk reduction standpoint, yeah, critical infrastructure and protecting that infrastructure that's in place.
It's nothing to do with our routing or our paths through town, our business districts, our roads, whatever that having, that's anyway. So this is, in the end though, we'll see everything, right? Like we're prepared for everything that could possibly go wrong and then where we could have funding for it.
Yes, the emergency operations plan is a framework that allows us to establish key roles on how we respond to large incidents. And then the continuity of operations plan is how we shore up essential functions while we're disrupted to make sure that we're still operating those critical functions to the community.
Well? Nope. It's so gauge any question that you might have?
Um, I was curious again with the, the timeline. I know you mentioned that the, the options are finding ways to extend or to, to help shorten some of those pieces so that there's not that gap. I guess my first question is, what are some of those strategies and how many people like partners are involved in affecting that timeline? And into what kind of are the, the consequences of expiration?
So I'll let Kesha speak to the timeline and the partners. One of the things that we wanted to really make clear through this and the difference between the plans on their crisis response, the EOP and the COOP versus the hazard mitigation plan is that the timeline for grants tied to the hazard mitigation plan does not impact risk for disaster recovery on an emergency event. Should there be another derecho tornado, that is different than grant funding that would come through HMP funds. So in regards to risk for that tied to that, that is different, different on a disaster declaration. But Kesha, if you wanted to speak to the partners with ECI cog and.
For sure. I have not heard back from, so I've been working with Alicia Presto with EC cog and as our, as our sounding board and, and also our in between, between us and Homeland Security as far as the reviewer of our hazard mitigation plan. A, we can request an extension. We're still waiting to hear back on whether or not that's a feasible option. Another thing is again, just putting all apples in one cart, trying to, to fast forward this plan, something that might take until spring to get done is, is fast tracking that, putting more staff on that, understanding that it's, nobody wants the gap, right? But what do we look at for risks? So the thing is, is, as Chief Fagan noted, this is, this is hazard mitigation identification and readying ourselves to apply for funding pre-storm, pre any type of disaster. And so these are well-known funds that have typically a funding cycle. And so during this gap, we can't apply for those. But knowing that funding cycle, we can apply before it expires and after it's enacted. And so again, minimizing the risk if we, if we know what we want to go after, say as generators, we can apply in, well, in December, right before, before anything would expire. And so again, that we're trying to minimize the gap if there is a gap, recognizing that, understanding where our limitations would be to even apply for funding. And again, nothing to do with disaster response. And so that's, just want to assure the council that's not part of this.
So the question I have about the hazard mitigation plan, at the local level, is that tailored at all to address specific community risk that somebody else might not then have?
You bet.
Okay.
You bet. And so these are, EC cog will help us walk through these, look at our, our previous plan. What have we identified? And as Chief Fagan noted, I think that there were thirteen, we had noted thirteen natural disasters, six man-made or, or other disasters that we've identified in the past. We can identify more. Some communities say, you know, we don't have a river running through our town. So flooding, we're, we're not even going to mention that. We're not even going to talk to it. So it is literally up to our jurisdiction in our own section to talk about our risks and what we feel are our risks.
So you've mentioned Homeland Security. Are they the authorizing and approving agency?
That's my understanding, yes.
Is FEMA involved at all?
Yes. I'm, I'm not quite sure the breakdown of who's who's boss, but yes.
Yeah, I, okay. I'll suppress my unnatural curiosity about that. Yeah.
There's coordination with both. Yes.
Sorry. Okay, okay. Homeland Securities. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? This is an integration of effort and planning and preparedness. I think this is great.
And this will be brought back to you before, you know, ultimately when we go into any type of contract or agreement with, to begin this process. But just wanted to keep you up to date on, on what you'll be experiencing the next year.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our upcoming agenda review. And we'll take, take first a look at the consent agenda. There's only one item, item A three that is marked and that Kara, you've got that?
I do. Thank you. Counsel, if you recall, we've had some safety concerns relating to cocktails and company to put that a little bit mildly. And we've brought forward some possibilities that included some administrative solutions such as pursuing an emergency suspension, denying the renewal of their liquor license, pursuing a criminal, I, I, I guess it's quasi criminal. So a civil public safety nuisance in district court or pursuing a municipal infraction in small claims. And rather than pursue any of those four, what we did was we sat down with the owners and talked about some potential steps that they could take to help ensure the safety of their patrons. And what we were able to come up with was an agreement that would allow the renewal of their license to move forward conditioned on some different provisions, which include moving their closing time up to midnight, keeping their capacity at seventy-five percent and agreeing to have no live music or DJs during this renewal period. And the reason that we looked at those conditions in particular are because in general, on a regular night, you're not going to have a lot of the trouble until those later hours or the people who are going out for the long haul are going to go to places that are open past that midnight deadline rather than have to move around. Lowering the capacity makes it easier for the safety personnel that they have on hand, the bouncers or whoever else they have working the doors to kind of keep an eye on who's there, what situations there may be, and they may be able to head things off before something comes up. And with no live music or DJs, that helps with that crowd control. And additionally, people tend to get a little bit more lively when there's the entertainment factors involved. And so the, the owners were very agreeable to these conditions and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? So Kara, the question I did pose to you earlier today, I think, or maybe it was yesterday, was basically, you know, it was, was this complement of actions enough deterrents? And I think what it really is, it's threat reduction, reducing the opportunity for bad behavior.
It, it really does. And the, the new provision in the Iowa code relating to the public safety nuisances, which is specifically designed to address situations like what we've had at cocktails, really it, it even enumerates these types of conditions. So these are conditions that other communities are using to help make some of their later night venues a safer place for the community.
So if there's a breach of any one of these conditions, how fast is our reaction?
That would be kind of at our discretion. It would depend on essentially the situation, but we could take action immediately. The next day we could file for the emergency suspension. We could file an emergency, I mean, not emergency, sorry. We can file a municipal infraction or we could file in district court immediately.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, I think this is absolutely the best path. It's in the best interest of the business and I'm glad that they've engaged all of you on this. So I hope this works out for the long haul. Really? Thank you. Okay. Is there anything from A three down to A fourteen we need to talk about? Okay. Amber, A fourteen, you're up.
Thank you, counsel. Last January, you'll recall, we issued an RFQ for a community wide wayfinding system. We received three responses and a review panel consisting of representatives from the Parks and Recreation Department, the Planning Division, the Communications Division, as well as the Chamber and Uptown Organizations helped review those proposals. We interviewed the top two firms and would like to recommend approval of RDG planning and design as our consultant on this project. Their deliverable would be a wayfinding master plan that is includes phasing so that we don't necessarily have to make it all happen right away, but can plan for that over the next few years. With that, I will see if you have any questions.
Any questions? Sarah?
Not really a question, just to thank you for this. It's, I mean, I think any of us who travel and have been to other communities, this is long overdue in our community with the great things we have going on and the number of visitors that are coming in. So thank you to the, your coalition of folks who pushed this forward to get this done because this is, this will be a great addition. So thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Well?
Will the master plan also look at the trails, like the Grandwood Trail for wayfinding and the Seamar Trail for wayfinding? So it'll be.
Yes, where it's comprehensive from veh- vehicle traffic to pedestrian traffic and it also includes the trails. We have some signage out there. So really kind of one of the first steps will be to look at what we currently have, what might be missing and then kind of determine the plan forward from there. But yes, we have discussed trail signage, exterior facility signage. This image is just an example of kind of the deliverable and cross-section of the, the imagery, images that we'll have specific to Marion. and cross-section of the, the imagery, images that we'll have specific to Marion.
Steve?
So Amber, so what we're approving here is a contract with RDG that'll come back with a comprehensive wayfinding plan.
Correct.
And then after that, then that will result, I assume, in recommendations for signage for a number of other areas that are going to be needed to invest in in order to execute the plan that they recommend.
Yes, there is currently funding in the CIP for wayfinding. We've spent some of that this year on different gateway features and a kiosk, the mast arm signs. But the phasing, it will be a really important part. What do they recommend that we start with? And then what can we plan for in the future in terms of future budgeting?
What, what groups around Marion do you anticipate RD, RD, RDG will reach out to in order to bring this plan together?
That's a great question. Community involvement is a big part of the process. So we will, it'll kind of have a smaller steering committee that kind of guides the project, but then we will open it up to the community, different sectors of the community, whether it be business owners or groups that host large events, we'll really try and get a good cross-section of the community to weigh in and even the broad community for general reaction to the signage.
So completion time, are we anticipating this will be completed this calendar year?
A six-month process.
Six months?
Hopefully, later this fall, we'll have something to bring back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, A fifteen, Seth?
So the Parks and Recreation Department purchased some inflatable bouncy, bounce houses to be utilized for our special events. In the times that the city or Chief Kitzmiller is not utilizing the bounce houses, it'll be available for for, for rental from the public. And these are just resolutions setting those fees for those rental, rental units.
Okay, quick questions. Is there advanced sign up?
We should expect this program to be open to the public in, in the next month, so. We'll take some advance if you, if you have something you want.
Well, I could get hurt in all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Just out of curiosity, will events that are, like say a city event that wants to use them, will they, will the vent be also charged a, a fee?
No, no, if they're, if they're city affiliated or anything like that, I mean, in the past, we've been con- contracting this out, and so we just won't see that cost internally.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
So Seth, do we have all these items now?
We do, yes.
Okay, are we going to be using these next around the twenty-eighth? Is it the twenty-ninth, the healthy day event at the Y?
That's a good question.
I mean, I know there's a lot of stuff going on there, but I mean.
I would, I would have to, I, I think maybe.
Oh, yeah, somebody here ought to know. Sarah?
I do not believe so. I do not believe that's part of it at this point. However, because the event is, we hope you all are attending. The event is intended so that if weather becomes a problem, everything could be done indoors. But then if it's going to be a nice day, because it, I, I guarantee you it will rain at some point on, on April twenty-ninth. It has for the past fifteen years. So we plan for it to rain, but then if it doesn't, I don't think there'd be an objection to having them if you wanted them there. That'd be fun out on the fields.
Yeah, we, we can certainly arrange that, so.
So Seth, just a residual question I have. So these are, are available under this fee schedule for general use by our residents?
Yes.
Okay, does that then include support for setup, take-down, delivery and pickup?
No, so it's, uh, the program's going to be set up for pickup, drop-off. We have instructions for setup. And then it, we, we provide blowers, everything that's needed for that. And then it's good for, we have block time, so it's not just a day rental, so it's over a three-day period.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thanks. Anything else on this?
So these, what you listed here is for the day?
It's for almost three days. So if it, if it's a pickup on Friday, return it Monday or if that makes sense.
Because that seems very, very, very reasonable.
Yeah.
And if someone, and if the blower goes out or something gets ripped and they have that, that's, we're, we're, we're not answering.
Yeah, we, 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 we have a hundred dollar deposit for, for some of those things, but then we also do, uh, we have some liability waiver form, things like that, that should cover us in case a situation like that occurs. And we have sta-, we have a setup for staff to do inspections as they get them sent off. But the three-day period is really to make up for us not delivering onsite or anything like that, so.
Got it. And you said delivering?
No delivery, no.
Good? Okay. D one's not marked. Any questions about D one? Okay, D two, Seth, back to you.
So this is similar to Cedar Rapids Relief Plan, but better since the City of Marion. This is a reforestation plan for the city. Went out for bid, had two bidders, JBC is what staff is recommending. This plan consists of planting schedule, planting schedule, maintenance plan, and some administrative items to really the foundation for our urban forestry division for the City of Marion.
Any questions? Yeah, Steve?
Yeah, Seth, when we talk about the reforestation
Yeah.
throughout the city, are we targeting uh, certain areas, or is, is there a plan in place on where we're targeting for the initial reforestation and planting of trees projects like this?
So we've been just going kind of on where our gaps are, where it was hit. This plan is really establishing where we should be going strategically. And this isn't just going to look at the gaps as far as in our urban canopy, but also looking at the social economic growth areas, stormwater needs, those types of items as far as where we should be planning, how much we should be planning, because uh, it's not sustainable just to be planting a thousand trees a year.
Yeah.
And so this is really going to narrow that number down and then providing a percentage as far as what we should be our goal, our target goal for urban canopy and for our community as far as what we should be trying to get to every year. This, there's a lot of, uh, there's going to be a lot of data point, but this should put it into a, a planning document that's going to be clear and concise, that's going to be consumable by the public, and it also provides a lot of as a valuable resources to, to staff, tree board, and then also to city council as far as what we should be doing as far as our urban canopy.
Other questions? Thanks, Seth, appreciate it. Okay, there's nothing marked from D three down to E five, any questions? Okay, E six, Mike?
Yes, Your Honor. So E six is a new type of agreement that I don't know if city council has seen this type. But if you recall, when we reconstructed Seventh Avenue, we put several duck banks in, not only for our facilities, but also knowing that utilities would likely want to come in there soon after. And we did not want our brand-new streetscape tore up. So we put empty conduit in as a part of that program. We have a United Private Network that has come forward, and they would like to utilize a portion of that. Depending on what section of Seventh Avenue you're in, we have anywhere from four to six empty duck banks. They're all two inches in diameter. And so what we did is we just took the cost that it took us to install the conduit, divided by the lineal foot of how much conduit's out there. And that's how we're writing up this agreement. So it's uh, seven dollars and eighty-three cents a lineal foot. Again, that's just the construction cost of what it costs to put this in there. There's two hundred and fifty feet that the, they are looking to put in there. And so it's about two thousand dollars is this agreement to put their fiber through the, the fiber duck bank that we have installed as part of that project. There likely will be more that come in as the years go by, but this is just the first, and so they will all be based on this agreement. And we did borrow this from West Moyn.
Questions?
So Mike, tell us again what Unite Private Networks wants to use this for?
For their telecommunications.
And this is going to provide telecommunications just to the uptown area?
So they're basically connecting some units that they have already, and so they're only using a block of the fiber at this point. So they're just using the empty conduit that we've installed. They only want it for a block to connect some units that they already have. So they might be a backbone to say CenturyLink or now Lumen. And so they just, they have a strategic area where they want to go from handle to handle. And so they're only purchasing the right to use a certain amount of a conduit.
So once we, if we give them access to one of these trenches or holes, if I'm looking at that diagram up there, is that one then, can that be used by anybody else in the future? Or is that one now only their use?
Uh, we're giving them their use. So it's two inches. So like I said, there's anywhere from four to six of those available, depending on where you're at on Seventh Avenue. So eventually we will run out of capacity, and that's where we have to then look and see, okay, so there's a two-inch hole. Are you only using a quarter of it? And have to look at that. But until then, there's plenty of capacity at this point.
And that was, that was my question. Are we going to, how are we going to allocate this out so that we don't eventually run out? So you feel there's enough capacity as we go forward to?
Yeah, I mean, if we had ten communication companies in town, I'd say that's not enough, but we purposely put that many in so that we could try and contemplate how many is needed.
Alright, thanks.
The question I had, Mike, and you and Jake responded to it by showing me this diagram. Can one of the conduits in this array have, is it conceivable it could have multiple users? One conduit, multiple users?
It could. That's not how we're writing this one. We're giving them the, the full use of the two-inch conduit. When you, a lot of times, the utility companies don't want to work together. And so, you know, if they both go in the same one, then they might say you damaged my facility. So at this point, it's easier to keep them separated.
So what was the provision of the agreement that if we, I, I might not be saying this right, but if we had no longer have any interest in a conduit or a, an array of conduits, that the utility that is in there can buy it for a dollar?
So I'm going to lean on legal for this part, but my assumption is if, if we truly don't want the conduit anymore, they've already paid for it. So it's our out clause?
That's correct. So, I mean, we're probably not going to choose to tear up the street just to take it out. So the conduit would still be there, but that would alleviate us from any future responsibilities or maintenance dealing with that conduit.
Is, is a one-dollar purchase, if our interests evaporate, is that a standard fee that utilities elsewhere would pay? Is that, I think you said West Des Moines, is that what, what they have in there?
Yeah, this.
This agreement is directly lifted from what West Des Moines is using. The only thing we changed was the location. And I believe we made some additional provisions since there's, we have a lot of extra space and there will be other users. So we changed some of the wording to make sure that it wasn't, nobody thought they were going to get exclusive use of all eight or all four open. And then, of course, we changed the cost to reflect what our cost of installation was. And that's been standard, whether people do this as part of an overall process, or there are a few communities that are doing this just in one very specific area or as part of just a project. But we wanted to use an agreement that would work should we make this an overall project down the road. For example, if we have it installed in subdivisions in the future.
One last question I have. Is, is this in a duct vault? Or is this, are these individuals just within a common pathway underneath the sidewalk?
So it's not like the old traditional ones where it's a, I'll call it clay material that you would put in there, and that's how you build the duck bank. This is individual PVC pipe that's just stacked.
Okay, subject to locates and everything else?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, so, so we're on D seven.
Yeah, so E seven, I'm sure several council members have gotten requests for churn lanes or traffic signals or speed reduction along thirteen, along our shared jurisdiction. Um, so what this is called is a TEEP request or Traffic Engineering Assistance Program. Uh, at the City of Marion, we don't have a dedicated traffic engineer on staff. And so what this agreement is, is we write a request to the Iowa Department of Transportation. They will give us up to a hundred hours of traffic engineering staff time that they hire a third party that does that. Uh, the engineering department and can, can, with the other departments would have to do the actual traffic counts out there. So some of it, for example, where we have a traffic signal, we can partner with public service and get copies of the, the cameras and then count that. But an intersection like Thirty-Fifth Avenue and thirteen where it's a gravel road, we would actually have to have staff physically sit out there and count vehicles for churning movements. We have classifiers that we can put out there, but they don't adhere to gravel, and they can't count if a vehicle is churning versus going straight. Um, so some of that has to be manually counted, just, that's what we have. Um, but we would meet with that consultant to figure out what counts they need. They would study this entire corridor. Um, even our partners at Medco have requested some churn lanes east of Walmart, so take that into account as well. So looking at the entire corridor of thirteen, um, they, they would then come back and give recommendations, both short-term and long-term. Because obviously, let's say that every intersection needs a signal. We can't afford that tomorrow. And we'd have to plan that out on how we strategically tackle that. Uh, the last one that we did, I believe, was Tenth and Tenth, and that's where we had a recommendation to put in a mini roundabout. And as you can tell, that's what's out there today. Um, so this isn't a program that we use all the time, but is a valued asset that's out there that we can utilize. Again, all it costs us is staff time to do the manual accounts. The rest of it is paid for by the DOT, but we do have to ask for that assistance.
Well. Well, then also look into pedestrian crossing or underpass or overpass or?
For this, I don't know if they would, because there, other than the few that are crossing where they shouldn't be, we would have to be out there counting. I mean, we can bring it up to them and see if there's a good location. Through the trails plan, that's where we need to identify where that location is, but this wouldn't necessarily address that issue. This is going to be more uh, vehicles.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, so finishing this portion of the consent agenda, F one through G one are not marked. Any questions about those? Okay, jumping over to the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention. Really, I think only one item there. Any question? Regular agenda, anything before C two? Oh, sounds like we're on C two. Okay. Chief?
That's me.
That's you?
So this is on the, the ATE camera policy that's going to coexist with the ordinance. Uh, basically, it's going to lay out or dictate how we administer the ATE program, assuming it gets approved on Thursday. Really wanted to just try to demonstrate that we're going to be transparent with people. The policy dictates that placement of ATE, stationary ATE cameras would only be done with council approval and based on data. It would be a data-driven decision. I will tell you that after I was besmirched by a colleague about my infatuation with bouncy houses, I may come back. I'm going to put one in somebody's driveway next week, but but otherwise, uh, we're going to go with, with the, uh, the intersections we've already talked about. Statistics will be shared with council. They'll be put in the monthly council reports. Uh, we're going to review the ordinance every six months with you, just like we do with the, uh, the ATVs. Uh, so you have a chance if we need to tweak it, change it. Uh, so you have a chance if we need to tweak it, change it, change your minds, however you want to do it. Uh, we put in here that the revenues generated from any enforcement actions will be dedicated to public safety needs. And they may be also used um for any grant programs administered by the Civil Rights Commission. We talk about the appeals process, that a member of the command staff will will be the the point of contact on that. Uh, there'll be a couple of options. They can appeal it directly to him. He'll review it uh and make a determination whether it's a valid citation or not. If if he determines it is and they disagree, they can ask for municipal um citation to be issued and they can go to a court and a judge can decide. So there'll be a couple of ways that they can can appeal that. Any mobile speed cameras? Again, those are gonna be deployed based on citizen complaints. We did add a line in there from what we had originally. And it was based on other information that necessitates a public a public need or a public safety need. Again, uh, we felt like that was a safety uh feature that we wanted to put in there. If we do put a mobile unit out, it'll only be out for forty-eight hours. And then we'll pull it back in and then we're gonna notify people through our social media pages and social media. Social media, twelve hours in advance of where it's gonna be at. So there's no hiding it. Uh, again, the the statistics are gonna be included with the uh council report. We've got the exceptions in here on what does not constitute uh a camera violation. That would be if uh the car's in a funeral procession or if the car's trying to get out of the way of an emergency vehicle. Uh, things like that are in here, pretty much the same as what's in the ordinance. And then we put in here what the citations themselves will look like, that it'll have a picture of the violation. It'll have the date, the time, a photograph of the vehicle, uh, the city ordinance authorizing uh the citation and then the appeals process uh on the ticket. And we we, I don't wanna say plagiarized, we borrowed from somebody else in this room who recently got one in another jurisdiction and it looked pretty good. You can actually get all that on the actual citation, but I I won't tell you who that was that uh got one. But she's sitting next to Ryan, so.
I see red face.
Yeah. So I I think that's it. If you've got questions about that or the ordinance, I'll be happy to answer. I I think it's a a good program. I will tell you, uh, when we talked about Highway thirteen, there is a a unit sitting out there now. Uh, it's between Twenty-Ninth and um just south of Twenty-Ninth Avenue. Uh, that's a manufacturer that builds them. That unit is actually being built for another jurisdiction. They called me last week. Uh, their um manufacturing facility is here in Marion. They wanted to try to work the bugs out before they delivered it because it's a couple hours away. They said, hey, if you'll let us put it out, we'll provide you the data that's coming in. So it does actually have a functioning camera on it. There's no citations issued. Uh, there's nothing coming to us other than pure numbers of how many violators they have. Uh, I got a basically a twenty-four hour notice this morning that they had well over a couple of hundred from just the last twenty-four hours since it's been sitting out there.
Wh- wh- where was that?
It's on uh Highway thirteen, just south of uh Twenty-Ninth.
Oh, my.
You see that it it's kind of funky looking. It it looks like something off of, you know, a a space movie, but you can see it's got a boom and you can see the camera sitting on top of it. And like I said, they were trying to uh tweak some things before they delivered it to their customer and didn't want to drive it all the way over there. So we told them they could put it out there to collect, so. We've actually got a couple of calls about it today and we said, no, it's not active. It's just, you know, testing that out.
Hey, Chief, can you give me the definition out of curiosity? When you talk about getting a ticket going through a red light, so at what point in the intersection am I going through a red light? So if I'm supposed to stop here and the intersection's over here, so I'm supposed to stop here, am I halfway through and it turns red? Do I get a ticket?
No.
Or am I back? I mean, so in other words, if I'm back here and the car is here and then it's red all the way and they go through, that's your definition? So if I'm halfway through and it turns red?
As long as you're behind the white line, when the light turns red?
Okay.
You're fine.
Okay.
It's it's the people that the light turns red and then they cross over the white line into the intersection.
Alright, yeah, I just.
That would be the violation.
I was just thinking about that. Some call them pink lights when you're when it's turns red halfway through, you know, but.
Yeah, well, you see that with some semis, some of the trucks, they're so big and and if they're starting from a dead top, uh, they get through and and before they're all the way through, the lights turn red. But they were definitely um past the white line when the light turned red, so they'd already started proceeding through.
That's not that's not the case in Cedar Rapids. I know. I was in the middle of the intersection, yeah, and I got the.
Oh, I think I think that's key, especially if you look at the intersection of of uh of of Highway one fifty-one and thirteen, especially when semis, a lot of semi traffic is heading west and then turning south on thirteen. And I sit there, I'm going east. And I mean, it goes red and there's a semi and he's already moving. He's already moving, he's at the white line, it turns red, but he's already chugging through there or starting to chuck through, he's not gonna stop. He's going all the way through, so. You know?
Yeah. Well, and some of them, I think they tried to beat the yellow.
Well, they do, they do.
Thinking, well, it's yellow, that means go, you know, whatever it means.
Thanks.
You start stopping.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, that was C two. And the next item that's marked is F three, which is the last item. Anything prior to that that requires discussion? Any questions? Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, typically, we have final plats just on the consent agenda. Um, but we did have some neighbor calls on this one, so that's why we are presenting it during regular agenda to you. So the applicant, Atlas LP Company, has requested a minor subdivision. The property is outlined in red there, it's just south of Boyson Road and to the east of Agit Circle. The um Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this at their last regular meeting, seven two zero. The two lot minor subdivision has one lot as being a buildable lot. So Lot one, um, being up in this area would be a buildable lot and that is just shy of two acres, the overall property being just shy of three acres. Um, Outlet A is that second lot. And that's down in this area here, and that would be just shy of one acre. The reason for the Outlet A is to kind of outline boundary out where that one hundred year floodplain is located. I mean, that is why it's a non-buildable lot. For right of way, there is no right of way being dedicated with this final plat. What was needed for right of way was deeded to the city back in nineteen ninety-nine. So as far as um bar review process, on the left-hand side, there's our future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan. Again, the subject property outlined in red, that light yellow in the future land use map is our designation for single-family detached residential. As you can see, the surrounding properties have that same designation. And then to the south, the green area, that is our parks and open space. As part of the um comprehensive plan for residential properties, one objective or goal within that is infill development. Um, this does meet that concept. It's kind of middle of built area. We have, as you can see in that middle image. Oh, oh geez, wrong button. There we go. Um, the utilities map, so we've got the orange lane here that is um sanitary sewer, the purple being storm, water main on the north side of Boyson. Obviously, Boyson Road is being constructed already. So this is a great um kind of infill development project. And then on the right hand, there is the existing zoning map, SR two, that is our suburban medium-density single-family residential. Again, it does match those adjacent properties as well. Um, and then to the south is that recreation and open space.
Where's the access? Right off of?
It would be off of Boyson, yes.
That's not a concern for anyone?
For a one lot, it was not a concern of the engineering department. So again, we're here um during the regular agenda because we did have some resident concerns with this. Um, we did send out postcards to um property owners within three hundred feet. Um, that totaled nineteen property owners. Before the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff did receive a total of four phone calls and then one um resident did show up to that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The general concerns were size and location of where the home would be built on Lot one. Button again. Um, the concept we got back was showing the house on the northern portion of Lot one. Um, and then second concern being could storage garages be built? Told that resident that that would take a rezoning process um minimum of three months. Staff would not support that request by a property owner just because would be considered spot zoning. Um, so with the single family, um, the SR two zoning designation, storage garages is not a permitted use and it would probably be a very hard sell um to have that rezoned. Then the third concern um that they all kind of mentioned was how does stormwater affect their property? So on this slide here, um, on the left is the adopted FEMA floodplain map. Then on the right is FEMA's revised map. So like I said, in the last slide, um, the home is looking at being constructed in this area. So water kind of slopes off to the south and east. Even without the construction of this house, um, based on the proposed FEMA floodplain map, that five hundred year floodplain in the dashed area on the blue or the one hundred in the lighter blue does start creeping up onto some of those adjacent property owners as it is. Um, we do have a floodplain development application for projects that want to build within a floodplain zone. Um, that would be reviewed by the city engineer as our floodplain manager. Um, that's quite a process to go through. Um, they have to prove that they wouldn't increase the elevation of that floodplain. In this case, the house would not be built in the floodplain. Um, any runoff would be considered a standard runoff from a residential home. I think code states that downstream or downhill residents or property owners need to accept uphill water. Um, so that's kind of what it would be in this case, but again, it kind of slopes down towards the southeast. So staff is recommending approval of this minor subdivision for Rogers Edition as it was submitted. Questions of staff?
I have some questions. Um, I've taken some phone calls on this one. On this particular one here, um, obviously, they're asking for the final plat before we have a site plat, correct? So we don't, you, it sounds like you've seen a proposal for.
For a building plan?
Yeah, a single family.
It's, yep, it's just one house.
And so our our ordinance says they can occupy up to thirty, is it thirty-five percent of the backyard, which in this case is a two acre lot? Um, are we looking at multiple buildings that could be added back there? Are we still underneath the restrictions so we don't run into this red machine shed in the backyard like we did up off of Twenty-Ninth Avenue? That's been kind of the stereotype that has been going around in this neighborhood here.
So it would have to meet all setbacks of the SR two district. Um, again, from what I was shown on their concept, house, main house is gonna sit just in this area where that number is. Um, they could put additional um buildings on the property sheds. Um, but they could only be located on Lot one, not on the outlot as it is a non-buildable lot.
I understand that and that's the concern of the neighbors is these buildings being built right on the property line that'd be adjacent to their backyards.
They would have to meet all setbacks of detached structures. Um, three feet without a fire barrier or with a fire barrier, otherwise standard is five feet. The neighbors could put up a shed today up against their own neighbor's property um in the back. It just, it does go down far, as you can see on the map on the left here. Probably not the wisest idea to be putting buildings down kind of in this zone. Um, there's a higher chance of water event um with the adopted FEMA floodplain map that those buildings would see water. We do have a nine hundred square feet detached structure, um, square foot allotment without conditional use. If they want anything larger than nine hundred square feet, they have to go through that conditional use process. Um, where we do require detached structures to resemble that of the primary structure.
I would like to see the proposal for the build out of that, please, prior to Thursday before I would vote yes on that. Right now, I'm a no. Um, I'm not in favor of another, uh, the house has problems out there right now um with that driveway going out onto Boyson Road. So that would be my second concern for that location. That is a very busy and high-speed area right in there. That's a a troubled area, that circle there, that curve. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess that I, that was just my concern too, is do we want to add more accesses onto Boyson Road, which is a more significant arturo.
It's a lot of records, so we do have to provide access. Uh, it's a lot of records, so we do have, we are required to provide access to that lot. So um, the will, there has to be an access provided in some way and unfortunately, Boyson Road's the only place to go to that.
Only way to go.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to provide some access to it in some manner, so. Whether it be a driveway or a street or. Yeah, we're just sticking with the driveway today, but.
Okay, so even with if they weren't doing anything, if they wanted access, it it would have to be on Boyson Road? Okay, that answers that. Anyone else? Randy, did you have anything else or is that?
No, I just, can you, uh, can you give us just a guideline? Where does our trail come out there? I wish this would have showed our trail. This must not be a very current photograph. Is it on that property with an easement or is it off that boundary line?
Through, let's.
Go to the plat.
So right here is our thirty-foot existing trail easement, which will be maintained with the plat.
So does, how far off does it come? I know that it's in the vicinity of that property line. Show me where it comes out onto Boyson Road sidewalk, if you would, please. Can you give me an approximate?
That I don't know off the top of my.
It's 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 twenty, thirty feet east of that property line.
Is it?
I'm gonna, I'm guessing, I'll have to go out and look at it tonight.
I seen him out there setting it up and I was thinking it was closer, but okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else having? Thanks, Nicole. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda and we um have a closed session. We have the motion.
Yes, Your Honor. I move to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. There are two separate matters.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. We have the legal counsel statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Abulosli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sternet?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved and we are now adjourned to closed session. Thank you for joining us.